...home to be here tonight to represent Arthur Potter, who would have been here.
Anyone else that has not spoken? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Carolyn Dorflinger and I live in Greensburg, Indiana. I do not feel that we need an airport expansion. I am not for an airport expansion. I am not for eminent domain. I feel like taking the farmers' land just to build an airport is wrong. These farmers have worked hard for their land and they want something to hand down to their kids and to their grandkids. And if this takes that, then we're going to lose farmers and no farm, no food. And Delta didn't leave because of the airport. We've got factories that's left that didn't even fly any parts. So I don't know where you're getting that Delta debt for that, but it's wrong. They didn't. The airport expansion is getting too close to some people's property. It's getting too close. We've got a hall diamond out there. We've got skating place out there for kids, little kids that go on plane. What happens if the airplane misses the runway and crashes into those kids and kills them one of them? Can Greensburg really afford it? No. I don't think we can afford airport expansion. I don't think we will be able to meet the payments and I am definitely against it.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Nini Kura and I'm a resident of Dehane County. And I want to thank you for the chance to be tonight. I understand that we're here tonight to comment on the airport environmental study, which was done thoroughly professionally. But then I also think with every public meeting, you're always going to get the Nini folk. Knock my backyard. Tonight I'm here to say Yimbi though. Yes, in my backyard. I live by the airport and it will be in my backyard. The airport project has been more than 10 years in the making. It's been a decade, a decade to do something that should have been done in the late 70s. A decade of passionate views constructive and destructive. Threats of business boycotts, providing a letter of support, a banner erected accusing a local business of theft, character assassinations of public servants, words and deeds that have some other Nini folk afraid to come out and speak in public, afraid of losing their jobs or their business, afraid of their kids being harassed, afraid of being publicly attacked. As a person who's gotten to a point in my life where I don't have to worry about that stuff, my job's out of town, my kids are going to graduate it, I can say Yimbi for me and for others. I thank the public servants who have stuck with this project, the foresight, generosity and courage to lead the way, to build the infrastructure that supports business, leisure and economic prosperity in Greensburg and in Dehane County. I do remember when a similar project in the late 70s was put aside and I remember that this community then lost a business and international headquarters. I remember friends having to move out of Greensburg because their parent shops required it. Would it, could it, should it? If the airport would have gone through that, the factory, that expansion, would we have had those factory closures and the job losses in the subsequent years? Nobody knows. Wouldn't we have, could we spare families, the pain of that job loss, the loss of home, the negative impacts on kids? Would it, could it, should it? But now we have a second chance, a chance to put the would it, could it, should it aside. There are folks who say they want Greensburg to stay small. They think that stopping this project will mean that Greensburg will always stay the same. Well, I have a beautiful little grandchildren. Sometimes I look at that precious little guy and I think, how I don't want him to stay the size forever. But we all know that's not going to happen. We grow or die. And I want to see Greensburg grow and prosper. That is why I support this project. No more would it, could it, should it. Yimbi, yes to this project. Yes to building the infrastructure. Yes to the environmental study that supports it. Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that's new? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lana Martin and I am a city taxpayer. I know most of these people here and I live in the county. I say three quarters of you, but I can see live in the county or you live out of town. I could only make it from paycheck to paycheck right now. This coming in, I know my taxes will be raised. I will be looking for another point out of another town. Because with taxes being raised, with this airport coming in, you guys have not said it. You guys have not said that all the grant funding is not coming through, the taxes are going to be raised for the same people. Your county people don't care. The ones that are rent, that don't pay taxes, don't care. Because their money from their paycheck is not going to taxes. It just really hurts that I may have to find a job from another town because I can't afford the taxes in my own hometown that I grew up in.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Steve Munsera. I'm a co-owner of Midpoint Stone Company. We have five quarries in the area, two of them in Dehane County. We've been in business for about 90 years. And I favor the expansion as a commerce development. Most fortunate 500 companies operate aircraft to do their business, but you'd be surprised at how many of these smaller companies do as well. When companies look for satellite locations, they look at the infrastructure of the town, but they also look at the airport access. So if they want to invest in Greensburg, they can get their people in and get them back home. They won't invest capital that creates the jobs if the infrastructure is right for them. I know in Belle Fountain Honda operates in Marysville, they have a lot of vendors and service providers that use the airport there. Our company uses aircraft to find mining equipment, but of course we can't get out of Walmart and find, we have to fly over the country to do it. We look at the airport as a transportation portal, the same as an interstate, a railway, a river port, or an ocean port. Infrastructure, airport as well, benefits commerce and the community, even if one is not directly a flyer or an airplane operator. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone new? Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Dorflinger, live in Greensburg. I just want to know, I could say a lot, but I just want to say this. How many of you people that were for the airport, if we're going to take part in your property? Or your house, would you be for it? Think about that. Or you know, anything you got. They're going to hate it. Expand your airport. It hates from you to people that want the airport. Would you be for it? That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else that's new? Yes, sir.
Probably all know me and I own a farm this east of here. And for everything we said here tonight, we need an airport, that's fine with that. My question is, would eminent domain do something? That our country's trillions of dollars in debt were always spent in someone else's money? And when we're stopped, there's got to be an end to this somewhere. We've got a bottleneck here, we've got all this kicking the can down the road. The can's got to stop rolling.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else that's... Okay. What I did was when we hit the three minute mark, I didn't want to end their message. So I put on a here to call you back up. Great Westrup, did you want to continue on with yours or will you finish?
I finished, thank you.
You finished, thank you. Jean, would you like to continue with Mr. Goddard's?
Not with Mr. Goddard's.
You're through with that?
Yes.
Okay, then you want to continue with yours?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I think is worth noting is that Honda located here without an expanded airport. Another thing that I would like to note is that my oldest brother Gary works for a rather large corporation in Georgia. And this company, he is the VP for their purchasing. He flies to Mexico, he flies to China, he flies to Indiana. And he and I have discussed this at length. And he told me that if we had an airport, the runway they're proposing in an hour from us, that that would be sufficient. He said the major thing with large corporations now is the cost of labor. I want to go on to say the need for this airport has not... One other thing before I go further. Also, NTN BCA has been cited as leaving the area. I have a voice recording on my laptop and I can produce it when necessary. One of the high officials in NTN BCA that said that this airport or no other airport had anything to do with where they located their operations and why they moved out of the city of Greensburg. The need for this airport has not been proven. And we have the Shelbyville, Indiana Airport, Columbus Airport, Batesville and Hillgrains Airport, all 30 minutes or so from us. This is a repeat and a waste of federal, state and local funds that we don't have right The expansion project, we were told had to be pursued because the runway needed repaving and our portion of the grant would be cheaper than what it would cost the taxpayers to repave the current runway. We were given the illusion that no grant money could be pursued to repave the current runway. And yet at one of the previous airport meetings, there was asked to be a vote to grant, for a grave request to resurface the current runway and they voted to do so. I have a newspaper already on, I'd like to quote from it. And there's a link here in my report, which I will turn in. And this is a statement by Glenn Tebby that shows that they were in fact under that impression. It's, Mr. Tebby said, "If we don't go forward, we'll be stuck with the airport we have now and an airstrip that needs to be fixed and a big bill," he said.
I want to remind you, you still have three minutes. So 30 seconds.
Okay. Skydive Greensburg has a letter of support in the draft environmental assessment and they no longer fly with Greensburg Indiana Airport and have relocated to Franklin Indiana Airport and renamed their business Skydive Indianapolis. In the front page, Greensburg Daily News article dated November 3rd, 2011, Bob Dodgery of Skydive Greensburg is quoted saying, "The airport activity and fuel sales..." A Dodgery also understands that the skydiving center constitutes 90% of airport activity and fuel sales, making it the primary qualifier for the airport expansion.
Don Wall, were you finished with your comment?
You know how the words are. Um, to finish this up, I got about three and a half points here to make and to conclude this night. FAA order 1050 says, "Quote substantial impairment occurs only when activities, features or attributes of the resource that contribute to its significance or in Jordan are substantially diminished. A project which respects a park's territorial integrity may still, by means of noise, air pollution or otherwise, dissipate its aesthetic value, comments wildlife, decollete vegetation and take it in very practical sense. No analysis to determine if the intended use will substantially improve the features, activities or attributes of the fairgrounds or park were done." Point eight, financial viability. City Greensburg's in the middle of a financial, of a fiscal crisis and cannot come up with the required funds for funding its portion of expansion. And even if it come up with the funds to support the expansion, it does not have the financial wherewithal to properly maintain the airport. Link to grant assurances. Since a proposed project involves the purchase of land with private money, the city of Greensburg is required to keep the airport in perpetuity. Since long-term viability of the airport, particularly at that location, is an issue that you might well expect to be revisiting, the closure of, or use of other than air now for in 10 to 20 years. Last point. Lighting. Movement of the airport lighting will not be covered by a grant from the FAA unless the FAA says the lighting has to be moved. This will result in expense to Greensburg of anywhere between $200,000 and $400,000 that may not be reimbursed by the FAA.
Thank you. Port Poplin, did you want to finish yours?
I have one for Poplin.
Okay.
I think it's important for us to remember some of the lessons of history here tonight. How was this country united in the first place? That was by the railroad. The railroads have a provision now where there's no eminent domain against a railroad because that was so important to this country at that time. The interstate system, that was in the 1800s. The interstate system of the late 1900s, it's my understanding that in this area, that Interstate 74 could have gone through Rushville just as easy as it would have gone through Greensburg. There was more opposition in Rushville, so we now have that opportunity of going through Greensburg and creating the jobs and the infrastructure and the transportation network that's necessary for the growth, the progress of this community. It was mentioned in Columbus, the Shelbyville and a couple of others near here. Their airports are sufficient for Greensburg to you. Do we want to count, what about the growth that's occurring in Columbus and Shelbyville and the other communities around us? Do we want to stay just as we are? I don't think we can do that. I think we go backward or we go forward. I don't think any community, like mine, does stand still. The cost has been mentioned a number of times. It's my understanding, and I'm willing to be corrected if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that the federal government has money that will fund more than 92% of this airport and there's state money involved too. So should we just stand by and let the Shelbyvilles and Columbuses of the world use that money for expanding their airport and encouraging their growth? I respect the concerns of those who will have their land taken, might have their land taken, and other hurtful feelings that they might have. But I, in 25 years of doing the economic development work that I have done, I have never heard a community say, after they've had an expanded airport, said, "Oh, I wish we wouldn't have done that." That was a bad thing for our community. What they want to do is expand it more.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you. Jean, would you like to finish?
From an economic standpoint, I think something that is on everybody's mind right now is unemployment and jobs. I would like to invite everyone to look at the unemployment rates for the surrounding counties as compared to ours, especially where they have a runway of the length that they want to build here. I think you'll find that there's maybe 1%, if you're lucky, 2% difference. The Transportation Board states that "The need and scope of a general aviation airport expansion can only accurately be determined through a return on investment analysis. This has not been done and has been requested of the local officials." I am restating this request here. Why does the FAA take letters of support in the number of flights that they say they are going to make and will make? Over the landowners and neighbors who daily observe how many flights they are making and note that they are not making as many as is reported in the letters of support. As a taxpayer, I object to this practice as there is no accountability to these numbers. If they want the project to happen, all they have to do is put down the required numbers to accommodate their want of expansion. I put together a chart from the original ALP and now, and it's kind of interesting. And I want to applaud a company called Distribution by Air. Because originally in the ALP, Distribution by Air said they were going to do 230 flights in and out of our airport. But they also put a disclaimer there, or less, the economy wasn't very good and there'd been a downturn and, you know, so that may be affected. Well, the following information that I compiled, there was a company originally in the ALP called Freeland Property Group. And it was listed as one of the major reasons at that time to expand our airport. Then we went on to the business registry website for the state of Indiana and found they were no longer in business and not only no longer in business, but had been in business a little bit less than four years. The ALP had been updated twice since this company went out of business and that, those numbers were not reported. The FAA required the forecast to be redone and it is interesting to see the change in the numbers. Because Distribution by Air is now going to do two planes and they're going to do 24 flights each per year out of our, in and out of our airport. Other numbers are Cloud Nine, recorded originally, 175. They are now up to 550 flights. Dehane Hills had 26 to 52 on the original and now 104. Skydive Greensburg originally had 355 and 610 on two planes. They reported three planes now at 900 flights, 1,872 flights and 840 flights. Distribution by Air, and I think the name says it all, their numbers go down and all these other numbers go up in this economy. I think that's a real, I think that's something to be questioned. I think that's all I can say.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a little follow-up. Something that my thought would be mentioned before, by the way, tax, anybody, if I have...
Please state your name again.
Yeah, I'll state it. Came to have it in there in case you didn't get hurt. Mine's Joe Shields.
Okay.
Okay. The one thing I noticed is people say, and that are for this, and I'm for, I'm for good things to happen, but I know friends that have literally left this community because of the taxes. Not going to get any cheaper. Sorry. But they said one of the reasons they want this airport out there is because it would create jobs. And I, I beg to say, because of the location, a very cramped location, in the first place, in my opinion, is not going to expand too much in that location. It's inhibited. And let's take a look at the big airports. Number two, when you do have an airport that has area around it, then you have sub-companies that come in and help feed that airport and work with like FedEx and UPS and different, a whole bunch of different things go in there. And we will be inhibited from actually making, you know, having more employment because of its location. So those are the things I just wanted to...
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak to the public record tonight?
My name is Stephen Wilson. And the last time I was to a meeting like this was about 40 years ago, when they were talking about putting an airport down around Newfley. And there was a lot of comments about, well, why do you want to take a bunch of extra ground and turn it an airport? Why don't you fix up the airport Chicago Greensburg? Thought it looks like that's what you're trying to do. Another comment was, I heard a little bit earlier about surrounding airports and one of them is Hillgrans, Batesville. Well, they're a private airport for their use, so they're not a public airport for anyone else to use. And another comment, I'd like to set the record straight on. The lady that was concerned about the tent coach at the Balltime is close to the airport. About 14 years ago, I was resident in Dehane County and I was on the airport board at that time. And we were concerned when we heard that they were going to put the Balldiamonds in. And we asked them about, why are you going to do that next to the airport? And they didn't seem to be concerned about it. Now it seems like there's a lot of concern. So the airport was here first and in my opinion, if that's a problem, they should have put Balldiamonds next to the airport. And that's basically all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lana Martin. Why isn't this on a ballot for us to state? Us city workers, once it's going to have to create these taxes, why isn't it on a ballot stating that we want it or we don't? I mean, this is my taxes. It's not going to be your taxes because you guys are county people. Why keep this going on? And letting us know how much taxes will be put forward from us?
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Don Wall. This time is from me, not from somebody else. I spoke for 30 years working for Ford Motor Company. We decided to retire back here to Greensburg and we own some property just at the end of the runway. So where, you know, every flight that Skydive Bay or whatever his name was, I took or had or whatever come in and take off. We weren't aware of that and bought our house, that situation was there, but needless to say, it's gone now. We're glad that he is. Expanding airport, you know, if you want to look at it for economic development, that's great. Someone said earlier, why, why think small? Why put it here? Why not find some property where you can do it and do it right? We're good for Ford Motor Company. As time went on, I'd say I spent over 30 years there and I worked my way up during that eminent domain management, so I had opportunity to work with the plants on lots of different things. Airports were not one of the primary reasons we built plants or serviced them where we worked. We had to use an airport for our product. It costs a lot of money, needless to say, so we didn't want to do that. Business applications, I said in weekly, almost daily conferences with my counterparts overseas. Telecom, in this day and age of electronics, to travel from one place to another, it occurs a tremendous amount of expense that can be done away with, currently with electronics and modern things today. So if you're looking at this airport to expand for those things, I think you're wrong. Number two, an ROI, it would have been a good idea to find out what your return on investment might be if you were to do this. What businesses have said they would come here, locate here or relocate here if you were to add and expand an airport? I don't think any of them are going to commit to that, especially in this day and age of the economy that the way it is. So bottom line is, yeah, maybe you could airport, but this is probably not the right place to put it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Again, my name is Jeff Martin. And I have to go back to something that Mayor Bailey disclosed when he spoke earlier. His last few words had to do with, had to do with that this would help the region. Well then, why aren't we discussing a regional airport and sort of a local airport if he wants to use that kind of language that it's going to help the region? And then another thing, there was a woman sitting on that side of the room that used the words woulda, shoulda, coulda. Said that she was tired of hearing this language, woulda, shoulda, coulda, oughta. Well, in an academic sense, that's an ordinary language. And what that means is that you're describing an ideal, that this was a perfect world. What would that perfect world look like? And that's when you use words like woulda, shoulda, coulda and oughta. The point that I'm getting at is, the same woman talked about an environmental assessment that this whole thing is contingent upon. My question is, where are the economic projections? I want to see economic numbers. Don't tell me that there's going to be jobs, jobs, jobs without telling me what's going to support those jobs. Where's all this money going to come from? That everyone, that this airport, expanded airport, the promises we bring. You know, if nobody's telling me that there's jobs, that's discrediting. But that don't answer the question. the question. So, in the absence of a, of an economic projection, it's a moot argument, expansion is...
Thank you.
I'm Rick Craywood. I'm just curious with a bigger expanded airport, with the security in the world the way it is, TSA, Homeland Security, will that involve any additional security? I would take it would with a bigger airport, and who pays for that? Do those funds come through federal, local government? Just something that needs to go into the record on, people especially concerned with raising taxes and things, where that money will come from, and if there will be additional security required.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Larry Robbins. I understand and know that this airport, if it goes through, will be built by tax dollars. And I think that it has been elected to say that if the airport gets built and they can not sustain the traffic to make money with this airport, then this falls back on the city to pay back. Well, if it falls back on the city to pay, then that means that the city of Greensburg is going to be paying for this airport twice, because it's our tax money that's going to build it, and then it'll be our tax money that sustains it if they can come up with the operating expense.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I appreciate you coming out and voicing your concerns for the public record. I want to remind you that if you haven't signed in, please do so. We have comment sheets in the back. Please take as many as you want, pass them out to your neighbors, your friends, or you can use those. If you want to put your comments in writing, you can leave them with me tonight, you can take them home, think about it, and mail, you can send me an email, fax them to me. Just remember that the deadline date, if you're mailing it, you have to have it postmarked by September the fourth of 2012, or if you're going to send fax or an email, make sure you get it in on that date. The, the way that you comment, whether it's here at the microphone, whether it's sending me something through the mail or email or fax, it's all the same weight. So they'll all be combined into the public record and submitted to FAA. With that, this concludes our public hearing. I appreciate all of you being here tonight and drive safely.